For October the twenty first, two thousand twenty-two. Let the record reflect that I've taken role that. Board member Eaton and board member Barr are absent today, but we still have a quorum, so we will have a have a meeting. Uh, the report of the minutes, uh, September from September the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two have been printed, posted, and circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? No objections and the minutes will stand approved as posted. First item on our agenda this afternoon under unfinished business will be the water quality testing. Craig?
Uh, everything looks good. Last report more's on the deck, so. It's good.
Okay. The A R P discussion. The city council allocated a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to start the study on the Twenty-Eighth Street stormwater. We have paid the final bill for Allen Stone for the River Road Water Project. All of that eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Well, I shouldn't say all of it. The bulk of that came from A R P funds. A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars came from Wood County Commission. And then we used sixty thousand dollars um out of our water account to pay the bill in full. So that project is paid for and done and in operation, so. Any questions on the A R P funds? All right, then we move on to the five-year plan. You know, it's interesting. The other night, there was a meeting at the Planning Commission and one of the gentlemen that was there brought up the ten-year plan that the city has. The city, you know, the ten-year plan was done in two thousand seven, so it's out of date now, but I have spoken with the uh man in charge in Morgantown. W B U is actually doing that ten-year plan for us, and they hope to have that finished by the end of the year. And so when that ten-year plan is done, then we will adopt it and then we'll be back in the timeframe. But uh, you know, COVID killed them and uh, you know, they just got everything off off balance. Everybody's ten-year plans are outdated now. I don't think anybody's got one that's current, but at any rate, we are working on that. At the Planning Commission meeting the other night, the gentleman was there, kept referring to the comprehensive plan. And I think people need to understand that when you draft a comprehensive plan, it is a broad stroke. These are the goals. These are the things you'd like to see done. As you all well aware, none of these things are set in stone. It changes so frequently of what you can afford to do when emergencies come up. But you have to have a plan in order to kind of set the footprint of where you're going to go, but the comprehensive plan is just that. It's a plan. So I think that as we go through this and we look at these things, um, you know, obviously, obviously Craig for you and scheduling the work and trying to get, you know, ahead of that, you're going to need to take a look at this frequently to make sure that the goals that you have, that we can actually get them done. Okay, and for board members, um, projects that we have that we would like to see completed in the city, Forty-Fifth Place for one, is still hanging out there. And of course, we've got all the other items that you know, Virgison and Naples helping us with with the stormwater and those issues. They're going to be ongoing for years. They just are. There's no way you can do it quickly. And so um, as you look at these and as you communicate with the other people in town, if there are things that we need to look at and we need to bring them to Craig's attention and say, how do we get this done? So. Any questions on the five-year plan? All right, Craig, any comments?
No.
All right. The next id- uh, item up this afternoon is the Twelfth Street Lift Station Pump Replacement Project Update, please.
Yeah, Mike, I haven't heard anything from the contractors, so I know that they've ordered the pumps. Sure, they're just waiting to get in once they, once they receive the pumps and we'll schedule a time to install. I've not heard anything from them, so.
Okay.
We did uh, we didn't install new lights. Lights in the wet well system um at Twelfth Street. So we can see a little better when we have to go down the pit. Two lights, it's yeah. Twenty-four hundred dollars. It's all them lights.
You put in LEDs?
Yeah, LEDs, corrosion-proof, you know, corrosion-proof lights in that pit, so it's just crazy what the price that kind of stuff is. It is complete. A little brighter than it was, but yes, it's, it's safe. Safety-wise, it's, it's, it's good. Always, always wish for more lights, so.
I, you know, every time we do this, they always talk about what a cost savings it is to go to the LED lights. It'd be interesting to see if you even notice a difference in, in the electric. I mean, if you metered the lights separately, you might be able to tell.
Yeah, the lights, it was theirs, was uh hasn't been metered for a while because they just hang off the walls, broke. Uh, it was corroded and the bolts rotted out and uh, hanging out bare wire, so. LEDs, I don't think you can get a regular desk light anymore, desk light, so. They always say LEDs is a funny thing because they guarantee you for ten years, but I'm not getting maybe a year out of LED lights.
Yeah, I don't get any either.
I, I don't know what they base that on, maybe a minute a day per thing, but it's uh LED lights we installed in the garage, uh. It's been, what, six years and it's guaranteed or said it's good for twenty years. We didn't get two years out of them.
Hmm.
So.
Interesting.
Yeah, shame. They're expensive.
You're just hard on stuff. You're just hard on stuff.
I, you know, it's, you think it is, it, lights, LED parts here burns, it's the control panel that burns them. There's so much heat and things, it just burns them up, so.
Okay. Um. Forty-Fifth Place Water Main Replacement.
We've acquired right of ways. Uh, I talked to Lisa's Vicki last week. Uh, there's been an issue come up on Fourth Avenue. Uh, there's an individual built a house there. We went to make a couple of water taps for that house and, and walk beside of it. And we determined that line on Fourth Avenue from Forty-first Street is actually a two-and-a-half inch line. And uh, we had a really hard time finding fittings for the taps. Actually, we could not find fittings. Uh, my mechanic actually made the tapping saddles for it. So I would like to consider uh tying that line in with the subdivisions behind it and place the line on Fourth Avenue to Forty-first Street. Right now that line does have a broke valve on it at Forty-first Street and Fourth Avenue, so I think go ahead and pump that line all the way up through and replace that line all the way up that road, so. At least get to a four-inch and uh, make another loop and get rid of that two-and-a-half inch because I don't have any dressers to fit it. I don't have any repair clamp to fit it.
But we still don't have a cost estimate yet on Forty-Fifth Place.
We have a cost estimate. When we were short started, we had a cost estimate.
That's been so long ago that that's probably not a good number.
Well, it wasn't good when we got it, but.
Well, okay.
So especially prices that I'll talk about later, uh, material prices, but yeah, it's.
I mean, I, I can tell you that I'm sure that everybody here would like to have that fixed so it's maintainable. So by going to a four-inch line where you have spare parts.
Yeah.
But you need to get us a cost. Because from where we got that last right of way, all the way down Fourth Avenue, replacing the street and doing all the things that we need to do, that's going to be fairly expensive. So can you get us a good cost estimate?
Yeah, Lisa, I was gonna talk, so I was, she wasn't here today. I was gonna show her what I had in mind, so she's going to do the cost estimate for that, so.
So Craig, as a senior engineer, when will we get our estimate? If we end up doing what he wants to do, we'll have to get one more right of way. Or he's going to have to bend that line to go on the existing right of way that we have. There is a, Fourth Avenue does go through. But if this is Fourth Avenue now, when it gets right to the end, it turns like forty-five degrees. Okay, that's a problem.
Yeah, this, this section here we're referring to. We have to cut from here. We've, this gentleman here is real easy to work with. We just call, I just will cut ninety and then come back down this way. So get a couple forty-fives in and it'll be done.
If we can get the right of way though from that gentleman, then it makes it a straight shot and it's not that far.
If we could, yeah, but I, I know his house is really close to it, so.
But you know, he may not, he may agree, may not, but we do have another pathway, so. All right, so Lori will put that back on the agenda for next month and if we don't get it, then then we can blame Craig returns. And Craig, yes, to my recollection, we have not had a water break on Forty-Fifth Place for the last year.
Yes, it, it's been a wet year and so it's, it's been good, so either things have changed or we just repaired everything that could possibly break, so, but it's, there are a lot of repair clamps there that needs to be done, so.
But it's calmed down.
Yes, it has. It's been over a year now.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Any other questions on Forty-Fifth Place? All right. Water and wastewater system improvements project. Oh, the update on the rate study. That's me. I talked to Amy about that yesterday. Um, Michael Griffith, the lady that's actually processing the numbers for us. She has requested the twenty-one fiscal year numbers. Well, because the state of West Virginia is so far behind that they won't take the old numbers. So Amy submitted all of the new numbers to Michael Griffith. And so they estimate that it'll be another thirty days before we actually have the numbers, but now that they have the latest uh, audit numbers back, that everything should fill in, fit into place now, so. It's not our fault that the uh, numbers got delayed. It's the auditor's office because they got so far behind on their audits, and we do use the state of West Virginia to do our audits. And so uh, but they've uh, indicated it'll be thirty days before they get all the new numbers plugged in, so on the next meeting, we can, we should have those numbers. And I guess you can get mad at me if we don't get them. Okay? Uh, we're, you know, Michael Griffith's got the latest numbers now. Okay, the dredging of Pond Run and the dry dams.
We've talked to everybody we could. Um, we got the filters out. I know there's people working for us, uh, still trying to get some grant money. That's, I think it's another way we're going to be able to afford to do that if we do get grant money, so. So the cost base department's working on it. I know we spoke to a couple delegates and things, so. What else we can do?
I know, I mean, that's just it.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll wait and see if uh what they can do for us.
Yeah. Okay. All right, that brings us down to the Twenty-Eighth Street Storm Drainage Improvements. Mike?
We have started surveying a power site. We've got it's asked which we had to do, we've been working on the workouts. Our hope is go ahead and start part that where we mainly easements, the whole project that way. Once we get everything laid out and
Do we have all the task orders and everything signed that you need? Are they signed? Okay, I, with Lori and I had that conversation and I brought mine, and I thought we had taken care of that, but, okay, all right, so we're good. Okay. All right, anything else on anything under unfinished business before we move on? All right, then we get our new business. We have nothing under new business today. We go to manager's report.
Just a couple of things. We've last couple of weeks, I mean, it's fall time. It, you get a lot of water breaks in spring, a lot of water breaks in the fall, and we've had our fair share last couple of weeks, uh. You know, especially on franchise lines, it seems like we're fixing some of these, right? Couple feet down the road, we fix again. We're dealing with that. Uh, the, the issue that we're having is material, getting it in. Again, I know we've talked about four, but the dressers, repair clamps, uh tapping sleeves and just different things. And the price of products out there right now, it's, it's getting really scary, the shortage and the cost. I mean, it's the little things that get you, and I hope you guys understand this, but it's I think it's really going to drain the water sewer systems here for too long. Me and grassy doubling price, you know, last year, a Bell Stroll's three dollars and twenty cents, now it's seven, seven dollars and forty cents, uh. Piping, you know, eight-inch pipe, you're, you're spending six hundred dollars for twenty-foot joint. I mean, that stuff, one-foot pieces out there is worth a hundred bucks now. We're going to have a big strain on our finances if we don't do something. Too long reference to rates. I don't see prices going down on anything, unfortunately, for right now. I don't know if they ever come back down. I'm not sure why it's so high. I'm not going to blame anybody or any political party that's not out here to do this. But it's going up and we really need to sit and look at the, look at the adjustments on this product. Because we're going to be in the red for too long, guys, so. And there's not much we can do. I mean, we need these, these parts to fix things.
We can't have a sale on water to increase our.
No, that's, yes, it's good, but it, it's, yeah, I know every company out there is dealing with this stuff. Doesn't matter if your water sewer, selling cars or, you know, stuff down low, but you know, we all know you get up by two by six now, you see some form boards that will cost you ten bucks or use costs three dollars. Screws, bolts. Drywall screws, you could use a dollar, two dollars a pack now, or like ten, twenty bucks. We use all these little products and it, this, this stuff is adding up quick, of course. Need more pairs of equipment. The, the parts prices are just you just buy a fuel pump for eighty bucks, now three hundred and twenty, so. We can't even get a truck. I'm sure, I got five trucks I gotta buy. There's nothing out there. Waiting for state bids come out in vehicles, but even to get state bids that they're, like Metheny's in Parks, I mean, they Parks had their order for a year and Metheny just told them, so, hell, you know, we're not going to be able to get it, so. A year wait on that. It's we got fire equipment coming up. We bought some additional brackets this year. Forced enough to find them, but you know, we ripped a bucket until yesterday in our back there because it's so wore out. And the mechanic welded, braced it and welded back up, but equipment's wearing out and we're not, we're not, we don't have the money to replace this stuff, so.
Craig, do you keep pipes and materials in inventory?
As much as I can, yes.
As much as you can.
Yeah.
Thinking outside the box, I don't know if it's possible. Can you go together with other municipalities and order in bulk? Like with Parkersburg and Williamstown and order pipes and bolts and stuff? Or is that outside? You can't fix. No, you can, and we, we did that when we did the home rule ordinance. We put that in there. Okay. And in order for, you know, smaller cities like us. Yeah. And we do those arrangements with Williamstown and with Saint Mary's. Okay? The problem with Parkersburg is they're great to work with. If we're in an emergency situation and we have to get, you know, something to do an emergency repair, if they've got it, we can have it. All right?
Where we're at, Williamstown and Saint Mary's.
Well, yes.
Yeah, so it's just not.
But it's not a matter of that, Joe, but the fact of the matter is there isn't enough of that material out there to get.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if we could find it, then yes, but that's the problem. And it's like Craig says, you know, it's getting to the point now where if it's an emergency situation, everybody's willing to share. But just to get your stock built back up, they're probably going to say, well, we, we may need that pipe. We're going to hold on to it.
You know, related, but.
There it is. And you know, we always try to buy the same trucks, so we have sparts, parts that will interchange. You may end up with a Dodge or you may end up with a GMC or you may end up with a Ford. And you know, the worst problem we have is with the police cruisers because they have to be the interceptor models, you know? And they're not available, not at all. And the trucks that we did have ordered, they shut the production line down. They're not going to make any more this year. But you drive around and you look at the car lots and there are several little car lots that have two or three, all white, crew cab, maintenance trucks sitting right there. Now, you may not get exactly what you want, but we'll get a truck we can work with.
Yeah, we're just talking with that price savings like we, we're used to.
We've had to make advances purchases of three times, so. First run out of orders. You can't even, you gotta have those being ordered. And I'm, I'm really concerned. Same thing happening. So I think I'm, I'm, I'm not going to get too far, but I'll shut up in a minute. I think we need to uh, we need to look at doing a policy like that, limiting it right now for the allow us to purchase things outside of our standard bid procedures, so long as we are existing, uh, which means we may pay more, be slightly more. Just because we have to buy them with our payment. But I think we should, we should very consider just limiting.
The last vehicle that the city got was two weeks ago. And we typically, typically buy all-white vehicles for every apartment. Put the labels on the door. You can automatically tell it's the city if you have it. This one's black. Only thing was available. We'll take it. We now have a black vehicle. I think we still have a couple silver ones. You know, but for the most part, ninety-five percent of all of them are white. You know, in the old days, white was the cheap version. Well, there's no cheap version anymore.
It's not cheap anything. You, you talk about bulk pricing from cities and stuff. The individuals I'm speaking to when I'm ordering products, uh, it doesn't matter if you want a stick or a hundred. It's, it's on demand. They, they're going to supply you and charge you what they want, so. The same price.
But I did, we did have a conversation recently. I told Craig, I said, you're going to start stocking up. We cannot let us get behind on these things, and I don't know how much, obviously not much success, but that is a concern, Joe. You know, the guys can't fix it if they don't have anything to work with.
We can, we keep stocked up with things. Don't get me wrong. But we're just at a difficult time getting that. We're, we're sending out orders of, you know, like quite different items, and the issue is, is used to, we'd get twenty items in. The truck would come in, it'd be all twenty items on that truck. And uh, right now, the trucks are coming in. It's like, okay, are you going to get two of these parts this week, two next week? Couple in a month, maybe three months on the other, and it's really difficult to keep track of what is coming in and what we have in stock. Because they have, I use, uh, in a break we had last week, I used six orange dressers. Yeah, we keep twelve on hand. I reorder them. Two might come in this week, two next week, two in a month. In the meantime, I got another break on a four-inch line. I start using more dressers, so I have to order additional dressers. So I'm not only down to two, they put me in hold, but I'm down to four I prepared mine this week about, so. Six, and now I'm, I'm always waiting for the products to come in, so it, it's it's been difficult. Like I said, and then the prices it's the little things that are killing us, you know, the grass seed, the concrete, and right now the concrete shortage. Where that's coming from, uh, it's difficult getting concrete. Asphalt's good. There's shortages on everything and the prices up on everything.
All right, anything else, Craig?
I do have a question for you, Craig. The demolition on Eighth Avenue, when is that going to begin?
Uh, right now, that the, the police department and fire department is wanting to use that for a little bit of training, so we talked to the State Patrol Contract Contractors with us. Uh, we're going to let them do a little training on that. Uh, there's some, fire department wants to call around and smoke and police department wanted to do a rescue mission or something like that in there tear some walls down while they go through. I don't, so he's, he's getting all the stuff he can get valuable out of the house and he's going to let them use it. Once it gets done, they'll be tore down in a day, so. But it's, it's nice to let them do training. Both, both of them departments want to do it, so.
Okay, I just wanted, I mean, any ETA?
I haven't talked to the police chief or fire chief this week, so I'm not sure.
Well, you know, because the neighbors are asking.
Sure, I. But it's.
It says that's my neighborhood. They're asking me.
When he's, he's not removing outside structure stuff yet, so uh, that'll looks bad for the neighborhood, but the inside's getting for, I, I, I stop in check every once in a while and it, it is moving along.
Yeah.
He's moving stuff out as much as he can inside.
The, the exterior of the house still looks good. God is still mowing the grass.
Right.
And I told Craig that as long as it's safe, no open doors, no open windows, nothing where somebody could climb in and get hurt, we're okay. As soon as he starts taking the windows and doors out of that place.
It's come down.
Even if the training's not done, they gotta go. So right now, right now, you wouldn't know there was going to be going down.
No, I know. It, it looks fine. It, as a matter of fact, it looks like somebody still lives there because I drive by it every night and, you know, they leave lights on, which is, it's okay.
Yeah.
It, you know, I just know we're getting into the holidays and, you know, how people are about their decorations and everything like that. To have that, it'd be a, you know, a, a construction zone, basically, if it's going to get demolished, then that's the issue.
A couple more things. Uh special landing will be seen installed next week. Y'all seen it. We've got a dirt job done, so. And the Twelfth Street Mission Buildings, Twelfth Street Building, the old garage, tear down. Guy had to delay because he had COVID. He contacted him last week. He was going to move in Monday. Uh, he texted me Monday. He said that his employee, he can't get employees to come here and tear his thing down. Want to know if there's any local contractors to help him out, but everyone I talked to is not interested, so. They'll tear it down. They don't want to piece it down. I mean, they'll take escrow's there and tear it down, but I think the guy wants to save it, so. There's been a delay on that also, so he is working.
Well, the good news there is it's not in the way.
Yeah, and he's paid us, so.
Try to be a little patient with the guy. Craig, how are you with staffing? You have a full complement of employees? Are you short?
No, I'm still short two employees, uh, plus this time of year is hunting season.
Right.
And a lot of guys in holiday season, so like I got Bill Blair's, usually runs a sweeper. He's more or less off the rest of the year. I got guys are off for two or three weeks at that time for hunting and holidays and they try to use their vacations and stuff up, so. Yeah, but this time of year, we, we cut back on our, our mowing and painted that kind of stuff, so it works out really well. So the guys are real good about scheduling the time. But I mean, as you talk about employees, I, we still, we still send out you know, field works for people to come in, got jobs, but you got John Brown paying what, twenty-six dollars and a half for truck. That's, that's more my.
That's hard to compete with.
Eddie, yeah, I can't compete with that. I mean, I got guys that been there forever and don't make that kind of money, so I'm too far above that, so. So, you know. But uh, he's, that's out there. I know, I've been in Harper about his workforce. The rate he's paying his guys is really good, too, so. We're not the uh, place to work for, I guess, money-wise. Benefits are good, but younger people don't see that, so.
Since you're packing up, I'm assuming you're done?
Yeah, I was done five minutes ago. I was rambling on, so. Get a couple extra minutes in, so.
Joe, anything today?
Nothing today.
You? Craig? Mike? Miss Lori? People work all good? People work all good?
What's that?
There you go. All right, back, meeting adjourned.